We'd like to call this meeting to order. It's a little after 10 o'clock on this third day of September 2019, and we welcome you here this morning to our commission meeting. It's good to have you all here. We've had our meetings this morning, and we've done a lot of stuff, and it's been a good morning, so it's a good time to come to here. Our invocation today, we don't have one. I didn't notice till right now. I should have picked that up.
I can do it.
Will you?
Sure.
We'll have Commissioner Harvey offer an invocation, and Iris Henin, you're going to do the pledge, and then I'll do the thought of the day. So Commissioner?
Our Heavenly Father, we're grateful that we could approach Thee before this public meeting today. We're grateful for our opportunities, all of us being able to serve in our different areas and capacities. We pray for Thy strength during this time. We're grateful for Thy hand, especially in this country, and recognize Thee here today. Father, we ask those who are being affected through tragedy, our neighbors in Davis County, East Layton, more importantly, those things, those families who have representation, who protect us. We're grateful for them. We remember them. We're grateful so much for our freedoms, for those documents that keep us whole. We ask, Father in Heaven, that we'll be a good example in all times and in all places. This is our prayer. We ask in the name of the Savior, Jesus Christ, amen.
Have you stand?
Would you join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Iris. We appreciate that. You know, my thought of the day, I thought I'd speak a little bit about the fact that we just finished Labor Day, the holiday where we celebrate labors amongst us, those who do all the things they do to support our ways of life. And, you know, I'm fortunate enough to own a plumbing supply company, and I have hundreds of plumbers walk in on my counter every day. And those guys pick up materials, and they head out to labor and give service to people all around this county and other counties. A lot of them go even into Salt Lake. And it's, you know, Weber County years ago was a big democratic stronghold that pushed labor real hard. Now, it's not the democratic stronghold it used to be, but that doesn't mean labor's gone away. Labor's still a big deal in our county. And I just want to tell all those who are involved in it every day, thank you. Thank you for what you do for all of us, and we celebrate, have, have celebrated that and give you thanks. All right, Commissioners, here we go. Consent items. Oh, hold on. Time for public comment. I about skipped over that. If there are those who've come to address this commission today on items that are not on the agenda, please step forward. We'd love to hear from you. I don't see anybody, so we'll move on. Very good. Consent items today. Request for approval of warrants 1981 through 1998 and 442504 through 442685 in the amount of $707,436. Item two is request for approval of purchase orders in the amount of $93,969. Item three is approval of the minutes for August 27th of this year. Item four is request for approval of new business license. Item five is request for approval to declare parcels 06, 008, 009 as surplus property. Request for, or from Weber County Sheriff's Office for approval of, to surplus office, audio, and video equipment. And item seven is request for approval of a severance agreement by and between Weber County and Jared Anderson. Those are the consent items, Commissioners. Any questions?
Just appreciated the declaration on the surplus as it relates to old, and we're talking really old video, audio, and video equipment. So it's, magnetic tape is, it's that old, so I'm glad that we're still using up till now, and we've gone more digital. So that's more transparent. Thank you.
Very good. Ricky, would you like to go over the warrants and the purchase orders?
You bet. We issued eight purchase orders this week for $94,000. Two-thirds of that amount are $63,000 for HR, and that will go towards purchasing CPR, automated CPR devices. 16% or $15,000 is for the transfer station, and that will purchase asphalt. As far as checks, we issued 198 checks this week for $707,000. No major portion of that, it was kind of spread out among a bunch of purchases, but 19% or $134,000 is for the library, and that's to purchase books, materials, as well as some software and some building maintenance. 16% or $113,000 is for our IT department, and that's almost exclusively for telecom equipment maintenance. That's the annual fee. And some of that will be recaptured because they provide services to the DMV and Weber Human Services, so we'll recapture some of that. 12% or $88,000 was, two ramp awards, most of it went to Far West, but we also sent $2,000 to Hooper. 8% or $55,000 is for the jail, and that consists of food, medical services, and purchase of a bunch of mattresses. 7% or $59,000 is for our elections office, and that is primarily the printing and postage costs. And 5%, we had two areas that spent 5% or $37,000. First one was transportation, and that was on the North Ogden Divide Rehab Project, and then for the Roads Department, purchasing of chipping oil and some equipment rental.
Thank you, Ricky. Commissioner Harvey, you had something on that?
Couple of things that were of interest. We had a meeting out at the transfer station with the Subcommittee of the Waste, and couple of things. What happens to some of our old mattresses? Well, I'll tell you, some of them get used out at the transfer station as giant Swiffers, so to speak. Well, now, you know, most people know what a Swiffer is. They put it down on their floor with a stick, and they push it around and wash their floor. Well, they Swiff. Well, at the transfer station, they need a little bigger than, a little thing that goes on the end of a stick, so they, these big mattresses, the bigger the better. They put them down and put the bucket of the tractor down on them, and then they clean up every night. They sweep the floor of the transfer station with a mattress. I thought that was rather interesting. And then another thing too, for those who may see this recording later, we invite you out to that transfer station out there on Exchange Road because the different levels of product, whether it's landscape product and wood flower bedding materials, it's wonderful, the different types of things that are out there. You can go out there, and they'll take care of you. We have, it's a great service that wasn't as readily available here a few years ago as it is today. John Watson and his team out there at the transfer station are doing a tremendous job out there, and they're, it's really a great, great place. And so if you haven't been to our Weber County Transfer Station in a while, we invite you back, especially as you're getting your garden beds and things, starting to prepare them in the fall, and ready to, so just, just a heads up for there. I saw some expenses related to that, and I just wanted to put a shout out to them. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Farr, you got anything?
No. You ready for a motion?
I am ready.
I would, I would move to approve the consent agenda. Second.
I have a motion, a second, on consent items F-1 through 7. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? They are approved. Next, we go to the action items. G1, request for approval of contract between Weber County and Stanley Consultants for construction management of the 12th Street construction project. Gary Meyer isn't here, so Sean Wilkinson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Last week, you approved the construction portion of this contract with Staker-Parson, and this will be for the construction management on the next phase of 12th Street. So Stanley Consultants went through our procurement process. They ultimately came out as the firm that we would like to do this work. The contract is for approximately $800,000 to supervise and manage the construction on that next phase of 12th Street. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Now, if you Commissioners remember, we had quite a discussion about this and about hiring an internal man to do this. Well, Gary Meyer, and Jared, and Scott Park, of all people, came to my office the other day, and Scott put down a spreadsheet and talked about if we hired an internal man, the cost of that man, and when it all got done over a two-year period of time, it was about $675,000 or $80,000. So it was that close to the contract. So the savings just weren't there. I felt bad about that because I really wanted to try this. So anyway, because of that, I put it back on the agenda today. See what you'd say.
I'd like, I still, I think your original idea to have, I'm not in favor of growing county government, and I like the idea of putting money out there for private, but if we can save taxpayer money, I'm in favor of that, and I'd like to look at this in the future. Does this need to happen now? Because I know this project's ready to go.
We would like it to happen as soon as possible. Construction would like to start within the next couple of weeks. So yes, as soon as we could, we'd like that, but if you wanted to hold off this week, I don't think that would cause a problem.
But this week, they did have a pre-construction meeting.
Correct.
Oh, it's the first meeting of the week, yeah, of the project.
I wouldn't expect those numbers are going to change much in a week, though, are they, Sean?
No.
I mean, unless, unless you see something that we haven't covered, you haven't covered in your spreadsheet, i.e. that we have an opportunity to save dollars, which I'm all for, I don't see any reason not to move this forward.
You know, Commissioner Farr, I tried. I tried to get this down and make a change and be a little creative in this, and the savings just didn't end up being there.
Yeah, and I, I know that we looked at this very hard for a week or two, and I agree with my two Commissioners that anytime we have the opportunity to save dollars, we should. At the same time, we have a private company here that's willing and able and qualified to do the work in the private sector, and unless we can save money, then, then I would say we support the contract.
Would you want to make that with a motion?
I'd put that in the form of a motion to approve.
Very good. I have a motion.
You know, I'll second with a statement.
Okay. Oh, please. Take all the time you'd like.
No, I don't want to take all the time. I hope that it's evident as we work through this. First off, I want you to know that having worked in construction now for over 31 years, there are benefits to saving time, and time saves money. And this, for me, is an exercise of being able to trust. This project is in the portfolio of Commissioner Jenkins. He knows what he's talking about. In most cases, he's been around the market for 30-plus years himself, and he gets this. And Commissioner Farr is the same. He's multi-generational in doing this, and so for me, for me, it's, it also is a matter of trusting that, that these Commissioners are genuine, and I know they're genuine in their duties, and so that's why I can make a second even after my hesitation. So that's where you, there you go.
Very good. Commissioner, we appreciate you and your, your thought. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Item G2, request for approval in a local agreement by and between Weber County and Huntsville Town for the lease of sheriff's office vehicle to help facilitate the volunteers in police service programs. Sheriff?
Gentlemen, how we doing?
Good. How are you?
Good. Appreciate you having me today. Let me explain a little bit before we get into the agreement what the VIPS program is. This is something that Sheriff Arbonne has started. It's called Volunteers in Police Services. And what we're doing is we're reaching out to the communities that we serve, and we're looking for volunteers in those communities to help with the sheriff's office. They help with small things, minor calls for service like VIN inspections. They help with traffic control. It was a little slow getting off the ground, but right now, we're sitting with 13 volunteers. We have 11 more with their applications in. Out of the 13 volunteers, eight of them live in the valley. And this is a program that if you're, say, a resident of Plain City, we want you out in Plain City because you take some stock in that. We don't want to send a Plain City resident up to Washington Terrace. We just feel that's more valuable if they're serving the communities they live in. So far, they've helped out with several events, including the County Fair, Tour of Utah, Hooper Days, and that type of thing. We have, the sheriff's office, or Sheriff Arbonne has put forward one truck that has been marked up. It says Volunteers in Police Service. It has an amber light bar on it, and it's clearly marked as volunteers. As part of this, we want the cities to take a little bit of stock in this and have some ownership, and Huntsville has done that. They've requested a vehicle, and they actually requested it through the county, and this was Kyle's idea out at the shops to have them lease a vehicle. And so this draft has been written up of what we, what the responsibilities are, and it basically says that this is a one-year trial for Huntsville to lease the vehicle from the county. It's a 2012 F-150. The county's going to pay for the upgrades, for the light bar, the decals, and the things such as road flares and traffic materials and things that need to go in the vehicle. The city is going to agree to pay for the maintenance of the vehicle, the fuel, the oil changes, and that type of thing. As part of that agreement, they will get a discount through having maintenance done out at the county shops, and that'll be paid quarterly to the county. So that's where we're standing at this.
Very good. Commissioners, any question on that?
No questions, but a comment if I could.
Please.
So this is, this is a great program. I've talked to the sheriff about it over the last month or so, and it's an opportunity for, just like you've said, Terrence, to get those people in the community out to, involved, to be better involved, more involved with their community. I was by the Pineview Reservoir a couple, three times this weekend, and just kind of monitoring the traffic as far as what was taking place. This is probably one of the busiest, probably the busiest weekend I remember this summer just because the water's finally receded enough that those beaches are available. There was a number of parking violations along the east side, Middle Inlet, and I think when I drove by, first time, there was no sheriffs there. When I drove by the second time, there was two or three, and they were ticketing, obviously, those people that were parked illegally. This is a great opportunity for those VIPs to basically be involved and maybe educate some of those members before they got tickets as well. I mean, I appreciate the sheriff was there, but anytime that these volunteers may be able to assist in, in making sure that people that are utilizing those assets in the valley better understand and give them the opportunity not to get a $50 or $60 parking ticket would always be good. Plus, just the patrol of the beaches and things that they can do bring a lot of value to that community. So I applaud the sheriff's department on instituting this program. It's a great program.
Well, the way it's taken off too, with Huntsville being the first, well, we've had other cities express interest as well. Plain City, Marriott Sladeville, and West Haven have also expressed some interest, and I think we'll look at a case-by-case study on what they want to do, but we're pretty excited about it.
Commissioner Harvey?
You know, there's a little, you in a township. I applaud your, this VIPS program. How many miles will we put on this vehicle? What's the estimated amount of miles?
Well, it's the Ogden Valley, and the vehicle will be used for Huntsville, and part of the agreement will also be used for other parts of the valley, say Eden and Liberty. We'll have to see. My guess is during the summer months, they're going to put on some miles, probably during the winter, not as much.
So we're really only losing the value of the improvement from 2000, a year, 2012, 13. You know, there was an old guy, Gary Davis, down in Uena, that said, "Pin a badge on the trouble, and the trouble goes away." You want to write that down, Tim? That was a good one. So this is, I think this is wonderful. You got, this is great. I, there's really not, we're, we're increasing the presence up there. It's, I, it's great. I wish, I hope more people do this. This is wonderful.
It was a little slow getting the volunteers, but now we're off and running the words getting out, social media and that type of stuff, and like I said, we have 11 applications in right now that we just have to go through. So we'll be up to 20 by the end, almost 30 by the end of the year. We're excited.
Well, they were very evident at the fair this year.
Good.
Yeah, they were seen around there. All right, everybody for a motion?
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Appreciate it.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, that we approve the interlocal agreement by and between Weber County and Huntsville Town for the lease of the sheriff's office vehicle to, for the VIPS program.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's approved. G3, request for approval of real estate agreement by and between Weber County and Weber Housing Authority. Selling parcel 04-042-0070, 04-051-0001, and 05-119-0016 to the Weber Housing Authority. Sean?
Thank you, Commissioners. These parcels were struck off to Weber County in the 2001, 2013, and 2012 tax sales, respectively. And we've had some discussions with Weber Housing Authority, and they are interested in potentially putting some homes on these parcels. So I know they came and discussed these parcels with the county commission as well, and the commission has agreed to sell each of these parcels for $15,000 to the housing authority, and that is the essence of this contract. Andy Beatles is here from the housing authority, if you'd like to hear from her.
We'd love to hear from her.
Right, and the state code does authorize the county commission to donate or, without any, any restrictions, to negotiate with the housing authority on how these types of parcels are handled. So that is, that's what has taken place here, and I think we have everything in order, but I'll let Andy come up and speak.
It was interesting, Sean, when we went through this, we realized we had the authority to give it to her, but our charter's Commissioners says we were supposed to dispose of property for the highest bid, and so we felt like we had to get some money for it, but it was a small amount, and we didn't want to kill your ability to, to develop that property.
Create an affordable housing project.
Right. So we hope we did that, Andy.
Yes, absolutely. We're so grateful. We're really excited. We're so, we're, we'll be building three single-family homes for three low-to-moderate-income households in Weber County, which is small, but we're moving in the right direction. Three more families that are in affordable.
We agree. This is a great step forward. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Gage, you've been involved in this.
I have, and it's, this is great to see this finally take root, Andy. You've done a great job. Your board's done a great job in looking at this. Do you have your other funds secured for the construction of these three properties, or is, what is your, what's your plan on that?
Nope. The plan is to create a pro forma, and then from there, so Ogden City is interested in partnering with us, and they may be willing to donate the plans for the properties, and then once we get that, then we can do the pro forma and then solicit additional funds. We're hoping through the Olene Walker Trust Fund, which is a zero interest, zero low-interest loan that we, that we'll hold on those properties. That will be the permanent financing.
That's good. Well, there's probably aren't going to happen as fast as Commissioners Harvey's extreme makeover homes, but hopefully they'll, they'll take place as quickly as possible so we can get three needed residents inside their homes.
Yes. And I just want to say thanks to the planning office. I don't know, are you in planning? I should say. You're over everything.
Rick.
Yeah. So thanks to Sean and his office, and also Scott for helping with this project, and to the Commissioners. It's, wouldn't be possible without everybody working together, so thank you so much.
Thanks to you, Andy. You're doing a wonderful job there.
Yeah, we appreciate you, Andy. This is very good.
Thank you. I'll keep you posted.
You bet. Thank you. All right, Commissioners. Harvey?
Ready for a motion?
Yeah. Commissioner Farr?
I would move to approve the real estate purchase agreement between Weber County and the Weber Housing Authority selling those parcels identified on agenda. Action item G3.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. I thank you both for this. I'm excited for this, and I'm anxious to see what the Weber Housing Authority can do with it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's approved. Item G4, request for approval of the first reading of an ordinance established to Weber County Control, Weed Control Board. This is for noxious weed control. Mr. Sean Wilkinson?
Thank you, Commissioners. Yes, finally, we are before you for the first reading of this ordinance to create the Weber County Weed Control Board. This is allowed by Utah Code Chapter 4-17, and this board would be responsible for the formulation and implementation of a county-wide coordinated noxious weed control program designed to prevent and control noxious weeds. So this ordinance creates the board, describes its organization and membership, and sets forth its basic duties. This will allow us to have a much bigger impact on how we handle noxious weeds in Weber County. Now, this is the first reading, so next week, we will be back for a final reading, and then after that, the commission will have the opportunity to appoint five board members. Two of those board members will be full-time farmers or ranchers, and then three others who reside within Weber County to fill out that board. So we look forward to that, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
So Sean, there used to be a noxious weed board, didn't there?
I, I don't know if there ever has been one in the past, at least.
Well, who controlled them, then?
Well, we have a county weed supervisor who goes out, and he's under my department, and he falls under Joe Hadley, Taylor Christiansen, right now. We've had that for several years, but he's, he's been a one-man show, so we have, haven't ever had the board that gives him direction or works with him to implement a county-wide strategy.
Well, 29 years ago, I got a ticket for my weeds.
Okay.
Who gave me that ticket?
Was it in Plain City?
No, it was in, it was in the Ogden Industrial Park, but it was Weber County.
Yeah, that would have been us. I, I don't know who that would have been, or maybe there was some type of a board in place, but it has since.
So was somebody just out to get me?
Well, did you have any weeds?
So let me tell you. We bought four, about 4.3 acres, and we scraped that acreage, and we piled all that topsoil into a great big pile. And when I say a great big pile, they estimated there were 10,000 yards of material in that pile. So that was a pile. It was a monstrous pile when they got done. And since it was topsoil, we had lots of people calling saying, gee, can we, can we come and buy that? And we were selling right off of it, and all of a sudden, one day, this guy walks in and says, here. And he gives us his ticket and says, you can't sell any more of that dirt. I was like, really? What are you talking about? And they said, well, did you ever see that property before you bought it? And we said, yeah, we walked on it a time or two before we bought it, and they said, well, that was a great big weed field. I says, you're right, and we're improving it. They said, we're grateful for that, but all the dirt you scraped off the top has got nothing but weed seed in it, and you can't put it on top of the ground somewhere. You have to bury it so you can use it as fill. That's 10,000 yards of fill. You know how much fill that is?
That's a lot of dirt.
That was a lot of fill. And finally, we did find a couple people who'd had some holes and some ditches that they had to cover in, and they were able to put this at the bottom and then cover it with native fill on top. So we were able to get it, rid of it, but it took us a year, year and a half to do it. And it didn't hold up our construction, but it came very close to holding up our construction. It was a pain.
This board does have that authority. Throughout the county, if, if there are citizens who have a weed issue, noxious weed issue on their property, this board can give them notice to clean it up, and if they don't, then they can be cited and fined. So that is.
Well, you know, as we look at weeds, Commissioner Fror's made a valiant effort of trying to keep Dyers Woad down in the deeper valley.
Yes.
We, we're on a site tour the other day up there, and Commissioner Harvey said, look at that weed right there. Was it you, or was it you, Gage?
Joe.
Oh, it was Joe that said that. And he says, that weed right there is so evasive.
Last one.
Yeah, he says, you can't hardly get rid of it.
Star thistle.
Yeah, star thistle.
That's right.
And so anyway, if we want to prevent these weeds from being everywhere in the county, we've got to do this kind of stuff. And really, so much of it's out of ignorance. I mean, I, I didn't even, I mean, all I had was tall grass on that property, I thought, when we scraped it, but to their point, underneath that was all kinds of other weeds. So it happens to everybody, and it happened to me. So I come under the long arm of the law there. So Iris, be nice when you're talking to the community. She's our code enforcement. Very good. Questions, Commissioners?
No, I recognize especially, it's been encouraging to see, especially Commissioner Gage Fror have such a zeal for taking care of something that it's, it's been a problem ever since, for the last 25 years I've been here, we've been treating and treating and treating. And sometimes the reason we continue to use county funds to treat county property is because sometimes our neighbors, and they are not taking theirs seriously, and the seed spreads. And so Commissioner Fror's been great, and this is, I think this is a step for the county in the right direction, so I, I, I hope that he would say something now, or at least on the second reading, but I'm ready to make a motion or support this when, when the time's right.
Go ahead and make your motion. I'll.
I'll make, I'll make that motion that we approve the first reading of this and establish a county weed control board.
Thank you. I'd second that and make a comment if I would. Sean, great work on this. You know, as the comments have been made, we've been working on the Dyers Woad issue in Ogden Valley for 11 years now. We have made some pretty good progress, but it's, you know, we're never going to be 100% there. It's just not going to happen, and we have other noxious weeds, weeds, as was pointed out, the star thistle and fragmites, and if we're going to protect what we value here in Weber County, which is our land, open space especially, it's, it's critical that we keep that as weed-free as possible. And there are a number of people, I would say a large majority of the people that I've worked with and talked to, that take the initiative to keep, on the private property, keep their sites cleared, and they understand the issue of Dyers Woad and these others. But there's others that don't, and that's why I was so adamant about pushing this, is because the people that want to take an active role will do it, but there's those out that just don't recognize the problem, or don't want to recognize the problem, that we need to get their attention. And this, in my opinion, and working, looking at the statute, this was probably the only way that we are going to get some of these people's attention to help, help those neighbors that work so hard to not be infested a year down the road because their neighbor didn't clear the ground and the seeds blew over. So I second this optimistically. I've already had two or three people call me about possible board appointments, so I know there's interest out there to serve on this board, and good people so far connected with agriculture.
Good. Well, I have a motion, a second, and I don't have anything else to say, so I'll call it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Very good. Next up is approval of interlocal agreement by and between Weber County and Hooper City for code enforcement. Iris Henen, how are you?
Good.
Good, it's good having you here today, Iris.
Good morning, Commissioners.
This way, when we talk about you, you were sitting right there looking at us.
I'd like to clarify your, your incident with your ticket. It was actually a former colleague, a planner in our division in connection with the state that gave you your ticket.
You knew that?
Yes.
Were you here then?
No. Not quite.
Wow.
I've been here quite a while, but not quite that.
Well, I'm impressed you'd know that. Thank you.
You're welcome. And this agreement is made and entered in, into in pursuit of Title 11, 11, excuse me, Chapter 13, Utah Code annotated 1953. And, and it's referred to as the Interlocal Cooperation Act between Weber County and a body corporate and politic of the state of Utah. So what, in essence, this is, is to help Hooper City and in cooperation with how we do code enforcement.
That's great. Any questions, Commissioners?
I can.
Yeah, I like it too.
Thank you.
Great, Iris. Need a motion to approve?
Yeah, I need that.
I would make a motion to approve the interlocal agreement between Weber County and Hooper City for code enforcement services.
Second.
Very good. I have a motion, a second. Thanks, Iris. We appreciate you bringing this to us. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's passed. Iris, thank you. Good job. G6 is a request for approval of amendment by and between Weber County and the DCO Group for Public Relations Services. This is a contract we negotiated last week. Purchasing hasn't seen this yet, and Scott Park hasn't seen it, our comptroller, but it somehow found us way down on the agenda, so if we decide to approve it, it'll have to be approved based on the fact those two get a chance to look at it and approve it.
Okay.
Commissioners, I have a few details about this, but perhaps this would be something that you would want to comment about for the reasoning behind this amendment. The county has a contract with the DCO Group to serve as the, a non-exclusive full-service branding, marketing, media, and communications consultant for the county. They, the contract is on one-year terms, but is renewable for additional years, up to three years. The original contract amount was for up to $95,000 annually. This would change that amount to, that the DCO Group could receive up to $125,000 annually. And in addition, there's another item on this contract to ratify payments previously made to DCO for additional work in providing advertising services for the 2019 Weber County Fair. The contractor that the county had previously entered into an agreement with before, that agreement fell through, and the DCO Group stepped in and really helped out the county with its fair advertising this year. So that item is also on the, the contract to ratify those payments. But I would turn that over to you if you have any additional comments as to the reasoning behind the amendment.
Thank you, Chris. We appreciate that. You know, it's interesting, when I ran for this position, that was the first contract I wanted to kill when I came in here. And I was only one vote, so I couldn't do it. Well, now that I've lived under that contract for over a year, we are so fortunate to have DCO under contract. The amount of work that they've done for us, and you just brought one of them up, Chris, the, we lost our contract for services at the fair, and they had to jump in at the last minute. Literally, it was just weeks ago they had to jump in. And they, as it turned out, they did a great job, and they did, they were able to stay within our budget, and it turned out wonderful. We could have never done that without the DCO Group. It's, it's just been amazing. And so I, I actually am speaking in favor of this this time. I've done a 180 on this, and I'm very impressed with Sasha Clark and what she does for the county, and how we're able to get ahead of problems when we have them. And so I, I'm very positive. Gage?
Yeah, thanks for those remarks. I, like you, Commissioner, also struggled last year as I looked at some of these contracts with the county, and the value that the county was actually receiving for those contracts. This is one that, like you, I also didn't know a lot about, but had some questions on. And after coming into this position, met with Sasha on several occasions to really drill down, and I asked her some pointed questions as far as what value that she saw that she could show me objectively that the county had received from her services, and then the cost of those services as they relate to what other entities, other companies like her could provide. After that meeting and seeing what she did with the Weber County Fair and some of these other issues that she's taken, that her company's taken on, I'm, I'm a firm believer that the county is in fact receiving more value than we could receive from another company, or especially doing it internally. They're experts in the field, they put forth needed information, timely information, that, that I believe that the taxpayer out there in Weber County, based upon the numbers I see, appreciate receiving, and it's something that we need to do as a commission to communicate with the community, with the taxpayers. So I'm in, I'm also in support of this contract. Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Harvey? In about 1992, Weber County hired PIO Scott Lunt. He served for several years, and now Scott works for Kevin Garn down in Davis County. Following Scott's, there was a little turnover there, but in or around 2001, 2000, 2001, Weber County hired Mike Caldwell, who's now the mayor of Ogden, to run those operations. We have taken a salary that we would have paid a government employee and turned it into a contract, an outside contract. So that PIO within the county no longer exists, it's represented through contract. I am, I think we're fortunate to have fantastic representation. I appreciate the support that both of you have seen, personally seen now, especially being in office. I appreciate our relationship with our media partners. Tim, you and your group, the Standard Examiner is one of those partners. We have a great working relationship of trust, and I'm confident there's more trust today, most certainly than there was three years ago. It's open, we, we talk openly one with another, and listen, we have a big organization here in the county, and you're right, Mr. Chair, there will be, there will be things, or situations, or problems, or fires, whatever you want to call them, that'll come up. But how we message, and being accurate, and more open, and, and basically transparent, I think is all of our goal, and this is a way to do, this is a way to do that effectively. The, the literally tens of millions of touches we've created over the last two and a half, three years is evidence that this is working. So I'm in support, and if you're ready for a motion, I'll make that motion. I'll make that a motion that we approve this amendment to the contract by and between Weber County and the DCO Group for Public Relations Services.
Second.
Commissioners, would it be possible to make that motion subject to purchasing and the comptroller's approval?
I'd like to make that motion subject to purchasing and the comptroller's review.
Take it that way. So before we vote on this, I want to say, you know, last year, what brought this to the forefront in my mind was when we had that fire on the hill in Uena, and nobody could get in there to find out what the services were and what was happening, and we were literally posting and putting out news, emails to the, to the paper and to the news organizations, letting them know what was happening. And they felt comfortable enough in the DCO Group that they were taking those postings and putting them right on their news sites. And that, that, that really did it for me, because when I seen that, it was like, wow, they trust us that much.
Well, let me, let me reiterate what was just said this morning and a few weeks ago. You know, when you tell the truth, and it's not a lie, you don't have to hide.
That's true. You always know how to get me, don't you?
I'm not trying to get you, but it's true.
Very good. All right, we'll call this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. It's approved. All right, Tim, you want a question on that when it's over, come to ask us. We'll talk to you a little bit about it. Item G7 is a request for approval of first reading of an ordinance by and between, or ordinance related to the indigent dead. This is Chapter 2, Section 28-2-7. Jason Horn?
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Tell us what we're approving here. We've been through this once, but.
Yeah, we've talked about it briefly, haven't we? So this is the, the first reading of an ordinance pertaining to the disposition of indigent dead. The county had a policy, some modifications were made to enact it as an ordinance. This makes the county's position more public and also gives it the force of law. Any questions?
Commissioners? Commissioner, I've been involved in this for the last two or three years. This is a good thing. You know, it's something socially, nobody really ever thinks about, but it happens. And we are taking a responsible role in making sure that we give as enough respect to the situation as we can. It's very cost-effective, and I want you to know, both of you know that I support what's going on with this.
So Jason, just answer me, I know we've been through this. What has this changed from before, where we had issues where the family would come and claim the remains, but then not pay for them? So does this change that at all, or what are we, what are we doing?
Changes that a little bit. I mean, the biggest thing is that it changes it from what used to be a policy into an ordinance now.
Okay.
That's the biggest change for this one, so.
So we're really not changing our actions as far as what we've agreed to pay from the previous?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, so I'm good with that.
Good enough second?
Did he make a motion?
Did he make the motion?
I don't remember that, but.
I'd make a motion if we haven't approval of the first reading of the ordinance relating to the indigent dead, Chapter 2, Section 28-2-7.
Second.
Very good. I have a motion, a second on this. It's interesting, most people don't realize that if somebody's found dead somewhere, or somebody dies at the jail, or somebody, somebody has to take control of that situation, and most times it's a family member. But once in a while, something happens where there is no family member, and if that's the case, we as a county are left to take care of that, which we do. So if that's the case, this is an ordinance. Lot to mine of you.
This is the first reading.
All first reading. Very good. I have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very good. It's approved. Thanks, Jason. All right, Commissioners, we have a stall of fame recipient today. Victoria Fasulo?
Yes.
Fasulo.
Yes.
Lynn Taylor and Ricky Hatch are going to make the presentation.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Too bad.
We're always happy to talk about awesome employees that we have here at the county. Our front counter in the clerk orders office processes over 5,500 passport applications every year. That number has doubled in the past five years, so they have burdened, you know, shouldered a tremendous increased workload with the same number of hours worked, meaning they've become more efficient, and they just do a fantastic job. In order for us to be able to do this, we have to be an approved passport acceptance facility, approved by the State Department, and each person at the front counter needs to be certified before they can do that. That involves taking a course and passing a test. And part of the training is being able to identify potential signs of fraudulent passport applications, because we know that there is a, a market out there for fraudulent passports, and so our team is, kind of acts as a front line of defense to, to identify those. There was a situation recently where Victoria saw some potential signs of what, what could be a fraudulent activity, a passport application. Our hands are somewhat tied in that area, but we do have the ability to notify the State Department when we forward along the app- Department when we forward along the application. Victoria consulted with others from the front counter and put a nice write-up, a good, clear explanation of the concerns, and included that with the application. And the passport acceptance, sorry, the passport agency actually, they sent out a monthly newsletter to all of the acceptance facilities throughout the West, and Victoria on the front counter was, they were mentioned by name in that for the great work that they did specifically for the write-up that she did and the quality of it, and being able to identify that. In addition to that, they recognized our entire team for getting 100% rating on their latest audit, except the passport agency comes out and audits every year. And they are consistently surprised, but impressed when they come out to Weber County. They say, we can always find something wrong when we go out to audit, and we just don't see any problems here. You guys are doing everything right. It is a team effort. Victoria's kind of the face today of the great work that they do. They would all be here to support her, and we'd love to have them down here to recognize them, but they're up doing their job handling 5,500 passport applications and almost 3,000 marriage licenses, and just, it's constantly busy up there. But we just wanted to present Victoria to you and recognize her for the great work that she has done up here at the front counter, and we just thought we'd pass that along. Lynn, did you have anything?
Just briefly, I've been here for several years, and the team has always been great. I think we've really hit a high watermark with the team we have right now. They're all outstanding, they work very well together and have each other's backs, so they're just a joy to work with.
That's great, Lynn. We thank you, and Victoria, we thank you. That average is 21 applications every day. That's a lot, and that's average, so I'm sure you have days you have 30-plus.
Yes, there are days when we have more than 30, for sure, yeah. I just want to thank Ricky and Lynn for acknowledging our efforts up there. It's a great team I work with, Ricky, Lynn, all my peers, they trained me, so all the credit really goes to them and all the help and support they give me, and yeah, thank you.
Very good. Well, I think we ought to give her an applause, don't we?
I do too.
We ought to go down and shake her hand.
How about we give her a parking place?
Yeah, so let me tell you, she gets a parking spot for a month, and she gets this high-end star key ring to put her key on, and it says, what does it say on there?
Weaver County.
Says Weaver County, a star employee of the week of the month. I lift that, I just put that in. What would it say?
Thank you, ma'am. We do appreciate you working for us and all you do.
Thank you so much.
You bet.
Appreciate it.
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great job, thanks.
Good for you.
Appreciate it.
Good for you. Come on right over here. Iris, will you come take this picture?
I'll try.
Or Christie, or one of you? Here you go. Get in here. Lynn, you need to get in there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just hit that white button right there, and you should see it.
Oh, got it.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again, ladies.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Well, Commissioners, that's good. I'm excited, and it makes me very pleased when we have high-quality employees and these kind of things happen. That's great. Well, with that, that pretty much ends our agenda today. Would either of you have anything else you'd care to comment or say today?
Commissioner Harvey? No, we had a great meeting this morning with all the department heads, and things are going good. I'm good.
Commissioner Forrester? Great meeting this morning. By my calendar, the summer's about over, at least. I don't know what happened the last three months, let alone the last, I guess, eight months, but looking forward to the next three or four, as we have a lot of important issues that we'll be dealing with before the first of the year. So and as our budget session comes up, you know, we have some big decisions to be made, so. Looking forward to working with the two of you and all our department heads as we prepare to get into that budget issue, which is job number one for us, so.
I agree, and thank you. I wanted to comment on that, too. I really appreciate working with you and with Commissioner Harvey. You two are both wonderful individuals, and you do a great job here. All right, well, if there's nothing else, I'd hit that hammer right there, that mallet, although I didn't get one out today.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.